Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, January 25th, 2017 to order. Can we have a roll call please, Mr. Alexandrovich?
Yes. Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
Mrs. Larson.
Here.
Mrs. Evans.
Here.
I am here and Mr. Lewis and Mr. Nielsen are excused.
Thank you. Has the meeting been properly posted, Dr. Pence?
Yes.
Thank you. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item 4 is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Larson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension. Motion carries. Item 4 is community comment. Is there any comment? Hearing none. Item 5 is the consent agenda. Would any board member like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Larson. All those in favor of the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 6 is school board announcements. Do we have any announcements?
The foundation does have the Valentine fundraising thing going on, so we might want to take a look at that. And I did notice that the UROC staff recognition is around the website, which are always fun to go through, and I noticed that they have, you have the teacher, where the teacher teaches also in there.
I think you asked for that.
And I appreciate that, so I noticed that also.
And Megan actually takes care of that for us, so I'd like to thank her for her work on that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to congratulate Prianna Lucky, our spelling bee champion this year, who will be moving on. She's back-to-back winner of the Franklin Spelling Bee, and she'll be moving on with six other individuals to the CISA One event. And last year she won that event and moved on to the Madison event and was runner-up for the, to represent the state of Wisconsin for Scripps National Spelling Bee, which we see on ESPN, so we wish her luck and all of our contestants moving forward. So we had that last week at the Saber Center last Thursday night.
Did you go into the second book again?
We went deep into the, 90 minutes this year instead of close to three hours, but again, words that the adults were going, wow, this is impressive, so pretty impressive work by our students.
That's good. I'm going to read this one because it's long. This week is, January 23rd through the 27th is the Light and Unite Week in Franklin and Milwaukee County. Red is the nationally recognized color of substance abuse awareness, and it aims to shine the light on the dangers of substance abuse and highlight the efforts to prevent abuse in our community. The goal is to engage in prevention, encouragement, treatment, and support recovery. Forest Park has posters in its hallways, and Franklin High School has been making daily student announcements sharing facts on drug abuse and alcohol abuse. Does anyone else have anything? Aye, thank you. And school board calendar is item 7. We have special board meeting on January 30th, 2017, here at the ECC at 6 o'clock PM. Regular board meeting February 8th, 2017, here at the ECC at 6:00 PM. And a regular board meeting February 22nd, here at the ECC at 6 o'clock PM. Item 8 is the liaison reports. Are there any board liaison reports? Item 9, reports and presentations. We have the instructional services report, the fabrication lab report. Mr. Cohen.
The bulk of the information was included in the written report that was approved to board docs. Mrs. Rock and I are here this evening. We wanted to spend a little time showing you some of the things that were referenced in that report so you could get really an idea of what visually the space might look like potentially and some of the equipment we might be using. This concept of a fabrication space that we've called and will be called from here on out the Accelerator Lab, really, the discussions began last spring, but it's something that has been on our minds for a while. The idea of a creation of a space in the school building that can be utilized in an interdisciplinary way to connect, you know, courses outside the realm of tech ed is something that was really appealing to us, something that's important, and something that was growing more and more prevalent in schools. You'd seen in the report that there were a number of schools in the state of Wisconsin that have fabrication space or are in progress in building them, and so they're starting to become an essential part of the curriculum in a lot of the work that schools are doing at the high school level. And so as we've kind of worked through that process and thought about what that space could look like, we had had some foresight in the initial renovations at the high school. When the new addition went on and renovations occurred, there was a space kind of in the central rear of the building on the east side that we had done some initial light renovating to with the idea that it might become a maker space or fabrication space in the future. And so some of that work helps set the stage for these discussions for us and allowed us to talk more seriously about how we might convert that space moving forward. We have a core team of people. Certainly, there have been a lot of people who've been involved in this process and this work. Our work began more formally this fall, but this is the team that has worked primarily on it, and they've been really giving of their own time, both just in terms of meetings, but also in terms of really creating some conceptual drawings and really thinking through equipment purchases and other things we might need to do with that space. They've been really instrumental in thinking through how we can make this a great space for students. We're lucky enough to be joined by two of those individuals tonight, Thatcher and Brian Devolak, who have really spearheaded a lot of our efforts and are going to, in a little bit, walk you through some prototypes that they're doing now and some of the equipment so you can see what that looks like from a real practical side. I wanted to start back with the definition of what a fabrication lab is. I included this in the report, but I really liked this definition. The concept of a fabrication space really began with MIT. They have a segment of their organization called the Fab Foundation. Fabrication spaces in the fabrication movement is really a worldwide movement. There are some global organizations that are linked up via satellite cameras, so you could go online and look at schools that are part of these fabrication networks across the globe and at any point in time see live video of what's occurring in those fabrication spaces. They're really are kind of joined together in a common way around some common goals and outcomes. But I liked particularly the bottom portion of this definition. A fab lab is a platform for learning and innovation, a place to play, to create, to learn, to mentor, to invent. It really is about taking concepts that we're talking about in our classes and ideating through those processes and then creating a tangible product at the end. I think about geometry as kind of a global example of that. When you're talking about geometric shapes and walking through a number of equations to get out of geometric shape, to be able to then produce that shape physically and see how your work through those equations without a problem translates to a tangible product, I think is something powerful for our students. When we think about science, as we think about our biomedical strand, students that are maybe creating a 3D image of a heart to go into a space and actually create that image and see it as a physical product is something that helps promote learning. So it's a way for us to start to tap into subject areas kind of beyond tech ed while also really advancing our curriculum in those areas as well. And so there's a lot of tangible benefit. Now, these are examples of the names of some of the equipment you'll see in a typical fabrication space, and I want to highlight really three pieces of equipment that are, I would say, most common in those spaces. And then Mr. Devolak and Mr. Betcher will show you some things that they've done in the past on some of these pieces of equipment. The most common piece of equipment you're going to see in a fabrication space is a 3D printer. 3D printers are becoming more and more popular. There's a lot of 3D printers now that are sold on Amazon that people purchase and put into their own home. You really have to have some level of design experience, but the software is becoming increasingly easy to use, and you use the software to really create a three-dimensional shape, and then the 3D printer creates that shape for you. I've got just about a minute-long video here that kind of shows an accelerated process So just think about some of those curricular examples I just gave, right, and imagining a student kind of creating that drawing and then putting it into that software and then creating that physical object. There's some pretty neat possibilities there for students in terms of prototyping and just, again, seeing their ideas really come to life. In addition to that, as you think about other types of equipment, one of the other more common pieces of equipment you'll see in that space is called a laser engraver. And as you think about engraving, right, there are multiple ways to engrave. Frequently, it's on wood, metal, glass, plastic, but the idea that it uses a laser to physically engrave and imprint on a physical product, and again, allow some opportunities for some creative design in terms of really a multitude of things from signage to modeling to a variety of other things that you can do in terms of engraving. And then the third piece of equipment you frequently see is a router, which is used most often to really cut through these different products. You can cut kind of different layers through it and create and produce, again, a number of 3D products as a result of, again, some of that programming in a more tangible way where it's cutting versus printing. And so all of these pieces of equipment and then more, as you saw on that list, are the types of things that we'll be putting into the fabrication space, again, to give kids a variety of options in terms of being creative and creating. And so I would invite Mr. Betcher and Mr. Devolak to maybe talk me through a couple of the prototypes that they brought in terms of some of the things they've done on some of this equipment in the past.
I just want to get some of the stuff off. One of the things that Mr. Cohen and Mrs. Rock have been talking about, this is a bias that the kids created. This is leveling, it's part of procedures and processes that we do. We take a look, and the kids actually step in the machine. One of the things that we've gotten, where we've gone through the EDD process, which they have engineering, design, and development, we are creating engineering, and we're not creating kids that are universal for skills all the way across. So all we're trying to do is give these kids a concept and a knowledge of actually taking a look and developing, producing, you know, failures learned. And the kids will learn through the failures of setting up the machines, making mistakes. The EDD has been directly related to some of the prototyping that we've done. Some of the kids have created bracelets, okay? This happened to be a conch from one of the prototypes last year that they developed. And with our IED, which is the Inter-Engineering Design and Development, or I mean, excuse me, Inter-Engineering Design, we've got it. These are the trains that they actually are producing in the software, and they are actually going to be able to 3D print this. So the kids are getting involved and doing different things. Now, the software we use is inventor, which is directly related to the PLTW curriculum.
Oh, that's a good question.
This is actually, this is a prototype, one of the girls is actually for the iPad stand. The girl from the table, they have something like a chair.
Oh, Janet, who's as part of this. It's the front end of the train.
Assembly required.
The CNC router, we did grab some different items at the beginning. This happens to be a start. I didn't be able to print up the whole thing. This happens to be for a trucker or some of these. It's sort of the top of it, some of the different computer skills.
More trains, more call catchers.
Absolutely. The CNC router, we had the Kales Group playground, we see all those tickets and gray going on the outside, but those were all done with CNC routers. And we're looking at this smaller version for this fabrication lab, so it's more accessible. I think with all the different things that we're trying to do, is we're trying, the curriculum between the tech ed and the core academic classes, we're trying to bridge the gap. And that's what we've been trying to do, is get the kids interchangeable, to use the knowledge that we are creating in tech ed, the kids that are in the engineering department, which is, those who need the ECP, the academic replacement, which is directly related to what we're trying to do, and get those guys able to communicate and do different things.
You know, you mentioned failure, and I think the mission mentioned failure in it too. Is there a lot of frustration in it? I mean, you know, inventors fail all the time too.
Can I formally invite you to the EDD presentation? That's going to be something that, from the other school, we have four teenage engineers currently that are mentoring the EDD class, and I will get them right now, through Mrs. Rock and Mr. Cohen. And that's, and that's a model for these kids, because that's a learning experience.
Because the presentation said, oh, that was easy. Well, maybe it's not so easy.
Yeah, I think the equipment sometimes is, not learning the equipment, but the running the equipment is easy, but the process of ideating and getting measurements correct and taking through that process and then struggling, and then having to go back to a team and try again, those are the types of things that I think are real productive struggles for our students that help move them forward.
And also in EDD, they're coming up with a product that people need. You know, sometimes they're going through like, oh, what could sell? It's the thing with that class is that you're finding something that people need rather than...
We had one pad that sold last year, the kids were only through the pad process. I don't know, it's something that's worthwhile for you guys. It's an open door policy. You guys can come in the room anytime you want and just see what we're doing. I think you'll like it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. So a little bit about the space then, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Rock to locate this.
Yeah, there are a couple of areas that we are looking to renovate. The first, the left-hand picture is our current, one of our computer labs at the high school. So you saw in the video reference to either ideating or creating. The computer lab would be the place where students would be doing the ideating, so they would be using Master Cam software or other software tools to design their prototypes or solutions to problems that they're trying to solve. This, the space across the hall from it is what we currently note as the maker space. That space currently is really being used as a breakout space for some classes. There's not a lot of designing or creating going on in there currently. So the idea is to have where those tables are currently in the background, that would be kind of the dirty space. So that space would be where we would have machines like the water jet and the kind of the dirtier machines. Up front in the foreground where those larger tables are is where we would have more of the cleaner machinery, so things like a vinyl cutter that wouldn't be so messy would be up in that area. The idea also is to kind of open this space up with windows and additional spaces, so we would hopefully make that space more visible as a part of this process. Adjacent to that space is this commons area, so if you're looking in real time at the space to your right-hand side would be where that computer lab is. So, and there's a picture that will outline this in the next slide, but this currently is used as a breakout space for some of our classrooms or in the mornings for students just to gather as a place to hang out before school. So the vision here would be really to make this a showcase for students in action, creating, and showcasing student work. So the idea twofold would be showcasing kids printing on 3D printers, a kind of a glassed-in area to make sure the equipment is safe and secure, but then, and also an opportunity for students to showcase some of their prototypes too. So you would see a vase, like Mr. Devolak had showcased, two other student pieces that would be showcased there.
Just to orient you, so if you're standing right up towards the high school and looking straight back, there's that saber head on that back wall, this is the other side of that wall.
And then this is a drawing that Mr. Devolak kindly created for us. So that larger space on the bottom right-hand side, that's the current maker space, and again, the left-hand side of that would be the dry area or the clean area, and then the right-hand side would be where we would have the dirtier materials. You'll note that they're proposing to have doors opening to the exterior, so that would be an addition, and then windows in that space to make it more visible, to really showcase the students in action, designing, developing, prototyping, creating, ideating, making mistakes, learning from their failures, and struggling through to work through their creation. Then adjacent to that is that computer space, which we've labeled the design center, and then to the left-hand side where it says the commons area, that's where that glassed-in space will be showcasing students in action and student work.
So the actual Accelerator Lab is that bottom image, and then the other two are spaces that support that, but we're really viewing that as three separate spaces that all integrate together and create a pre-dynamic interdisciplinary center right at the heart of the building in the back there, and it really kind of bridges the gap between technical education, math, science, and all of those classroom spaces that are there, and pulls them all together into a centralized creation space.
Mr. Cohen just alluded to this really being a space tying and bringing other areas of the building together. So when we're looking at connections to current curricular opportunities and areas for growth, really, you heard Mr. Devolak and Mr. Betcher speak to engineering, design, and development. That's a course in which students find a problem, they create a solution to the problem. Part of that process is designing a prototype that addresses that problem. We have a new capstone course as part of our business curriculum. This would likely be a place where students would use as an opportunity to design prototypes that they've designed in their entrepreneurship or this capstone course. Mr. Cohen spoke to biomedical innovations as another capstone course in which students are designing solutions to real-world 21st century medical problems. So kids would work collaboratively to design, prototype, build potential innovations that would solve problems for medical issues. We have a service learning course, again, that would similarly do the same thing. We've got a number of internships at the high school, all working towards that skills, that DPI skill certificate, so students would serve, we're currently working towards developing curriculum around an opportunity for us to become certified as an Accelerator Lab intern. So this would be students teaching other students how to use these tools, and they would be technically an intern during one period of the day. Similar, CTE department interns and youth apprenticeships are other opportunities for kids to get real-world technical experience at the high school level before they get out to their post-secondary learning. So it really ties in academic and career planning. They get to explore opportunities before they leave our doors. And again, other interdisciplinary connections, you know, that extend far beyond technical education, bridging into math, like Mr. Cohen's geometry example, looking at mobility as one opportunity to get a lot of these tools on wheels. So not only would they be stationary in class, but potentially a teacher teaching biomedical innovations could have a 3D printer rolled into her classroom, and they could be doing printing in the classroom as well, so be potentially having some mobility there. And then, as you know, we've got AP capstone as a two-course sequence that's coming down the road. That would be an opportunity for students that are engaging in the research process to also design prototypes to some of the solutions that they're coming up with during their research project.
So all told, you know, we're really excited about this space. I think all of the staff that we've engaged has been tremendously excited. We've gone on some site visits, went out to Three Lakes, and a couple other schools that we have on deck for some site visits coming up to see their fabrication spaces and talk to them about what went well and what didn't. And so we're really looking forward to the opportunity to continue to develop this space and make sure it really has a dynamic interdisciplinary connection and ultimately benefits our kids and the community.
So, yes. What kind of problems are they solving? Examples?
For example, for an EDD class, okay, just say one of these examples. When the kids approach it as far as a senior citizen, the earpiece, the most people hearing problems are getting hearing problems. The problem is that the devices that are developed right now have a beeping, or a problem is the person can't hear it, and they have their sights. So what they're doing is they've got, for one of the hearing aids, they're creating a skin that you can put around it that actually stays the same color as your skin based on the temperature in your ear. And when it falls out or it's on a brown, it becomes a brilliant or pink color where they can see it. So all these things are, and there's a whole bunch of different ideas, but it's all applicable, and it's through the problem solving what they're doing, and it's really neat stuff.
Thank you all very much.
Well, I have one question. I saw there, the past couple years, there have been grants out there for this program. Were you involved in that at all?
Yeah, so I think we're always looking at alternative funding sources. In this particular instance, as we think about starting up, a lot of the equipment that we're moving into the space is existing equipment that we have kind of in various points in the building already, so we're consolidating it into this one space. But beyond that, we're looking to add a couple of different pieces of equipment, but right now, the cost wasn't prohibitive for us. We felt like we could get going to the level we needed to with current funding, and then we'll continue to explore alternative funding sources as we move forward.
Very exciting. Thank you for coming. Thank you. B is the Human Resources Report, open enrollment, and Chapter 220 seats, and this is an action item. Dr. Miller?
In board docs, you received the number of seats that we are planning to have available for open enrollment. With regard to Chapter 220, we would again not be offering seats in Chapter 220. The board does not have to take action on that, merely informing you of that, but with regard to open enrollment seats, we do need to take action on that. The number we have is 56. There will be no open enrollment seats in grades 1 through 6 at Robinwood and Pleasant One of the things that's changed this year under the law is that we need to designate our seats for our children with disabilities by program. So Ms. Preman has worked with me on that, and we have identified that there would be seven seats for cross-categorical and seven for students needing physical therapy services.
Why did they do that? I mean, now, last year you had to put in special education, and this year they divide it out.
Yeah.
Why, do you know?
I think that, you know, there have been students who've been denied opportunities to have open enrollment seats, and it's an attempt to be really specific and provide information about why the denial is provided. So, let's see. We have no seats at the middle school, and we'll have a large 6th grade class coming over. 345 6th grade students currently are enrolled, so those students will be in 7th grade next year, and we do often pick up students at 7th grade level at the middle school, so no seats there. We also have, we're going to have a very large freshman class for next year. As you can see, there's currently 363 8th grade students. That's a very large number. This year, we began with 324 students coming over from 8th grade. We typically pick up about 30 freshmen just based on people who move into the community or enroll out of parochial schools. So we anticipate a very large freshman class next year. So, you know, we have designated these seats, and we do not anticipate them causing any increase in staffing or FTE. I would like to ask for a motion that allows us to add additional seats if space does come available, and I have listed that as part of the report. Are there any questions about the open enrollment seats or perhaps the history that was provided to you as well? On historical data?
On historical data, the, for example, the McFarland, I'm just using that as an example. Those have to all be open enrollment seats, correct? Going out.
Those would be going out, right. Students who were residents of Franklin.
So that's virtual school then?
I believe so. Ms. Witkowski asked that question and that's what I've heard.
Or Ozaki and, you know, all of those.
And even though we were adding 56, we may not end up with additional 56 students.
Correct.
Because even last year.
It's difficult because you may have a large number of seats at one grade level and not that many applicants to fill them. And families typically come together, so they want their third grader and their fifth grader. So while I might have a fifth grade seat, if I don't have a third grade seat, they're going to not come because they want both of their children to attend. So it's a process and it is difficult sometimes to fill all the seats. What we've done in the past is we watch kindergarten very closely and if we can add two, three, four, five more seats at the kindergarten level, that's typically where we will do that.
And it looks like last year the number of applicants did drop quite a bit, 425 versus 347?
I don't have a specific explanation for that other than there are so many options that parents have now for enrolling their students in schools that open enrollment is just one of them.
But if you look, if you look at the list, Milwaukee dropped, so that, again, that could be because that's the rule in Milwaukee that you don't have to live there anymore to be in a public servant there. And they did have an increase of moves to Milwa, from Milwaukee to Franklin. So maybe that had to do with it.
Transportation is always an issue to some people.
We're looking for a motion to approve 56 open enrollment seats for the 2018 school year with additional seats to be added if space becomes available and with seven seats in the cross-categorical program, with seven seats in the physical therapy program for children with disabilities. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension. Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. And then item nine, C is a state convention report. You'll see Mr. Nielsen added a little update on the resolutions. And so we put in a link also from last meeting to the resolutions in case you want to compare anything. And then Mrs. Witkowski and I attended and I have a written report, which I'll give a couple of comments on it. Mrs. Witkowski, do you want to say anything about?
Do you want to start?
No, you can start.
All right, so the convention, I was, there were three excellent speakers. The first one, which I think you'll see Janet summarized, but it was on the trust edge, so it was about trust. And interestingly enough, that theme kind of came up again later with some outgoing, the president of Wasby made some comments. And he, last year, his theme was trust is a must. It starts with us. I thought it was nice with the connection. But he also made the comment that, you know, Walker, Walker's statement about education is that he trusts parents, which I think is his reason for somewhat supporting vouchers, because he trusts parents to make decisions. And he kind of threw out to the audience, so what does that mean about administration? Do we not trust our parents? You know, what is our relationship with our parents? He also said that we should think about talking to our legislators because sometimes that contact can spark trust between the parties. Then also, the incoming president had a nice comment also. I don't know, there's 422 school districts in the state and it always surprises me how the range of sizes, you know, from 500 to, you know, Milwaukee and even our size. But his theme is we want to move to the engine room from the caboose. You know, we're not leading things, we're kind of following. We've got to step up and try and provide some leadership. Also, another speaker was Liz Murray. She, her story is that she was homeless in New York and she went to Harvard and graduated. And it's just like, hearing her tell her story is very compelling. Her parents were drug addicts, but in the end, she still knew that they loved her. And she is always wrestling with how did she make that decision to, you know, to take the right path? She always tries to say, what was it that really mattered to her? And she mentioned her teachers, but it kind of worked both ways. She did drop out and she came back. But there was a moment when her mother finally passed away, when she realized that she, that she mattered and she needed to make, change her thinking. So just to hear her talk is, was very, very compelling. And then the last speaker was Freddie Laverdy. His story is underwater dreams. It's when he took a group of kids, Hispanic kids, he taught, he teaches at, I don't know if he still teaches, but it was a public high school in Phoenix, Arizona, and he teaches science, but he took this group and they entered a contest and they, they beat out MIT in this underwater, they had to put together this underwater robot. And they won, and they actually won. And he told his story and also, and it's also going to be a movie. I forgot the movie. Spare Parts, I think, is the movie, if you're interested in seeing the movie. But his thing was, that I thought was very interesting, was he said that learning is three-dimensional. It requires a social connection, there's content, and there's also a physicality to it. You need to have this hands-on component. And also, he mentioned meaningful relationships. But he thinks that that's kind of hard to do in a classroom because most of his involvement with his kids was outside the classroom because he didn't feel there was enough time and with the current curriculum requirements, he could not really do that effectively in the classroom. And he also made the comment that we heard tonight also is that they found that his students learned the most when they failed, which is one of the reasons why they actually attempted to this contest, because they figured, well, they would learn a lot, they would never win it, but they could, they could see how people that wanted would do things and they would learn a lot. So that was also very interesting. I did get a chance to attend about six sessions and I'll just cover the highlights. Janet mentioned also attended the one on the mental health issues, student mental health issues. I think what I find fascinating there is that we actually have a mental health first aid. We all know about physical first aid, but there's also this certification you can get for a mental health first aid. And it'd be nice if we could spread the word and get some training in our schools in that area. I don't know what's involved, but it would be good to research that and maybe with the health department, we can kind of get that going in the community. Another one I went to was Becoming the Leader We Read About. That was presented by a superintendent from the Frederick District. And again, it was about trust and his book, though, was more The Speed of Trust by Stephen Covey. So there seems to be a lot of books out there now. Leadership is really about trust. Community Engagement: Three Steps to Leverage Social Media. Again, using, leveraging social media to really tell our story. It's like a window into the classroom. Some of the, and this particular presenter, she actually, you can actually outsource this. You can get this person to kind of do that for you, to kind of collect, because it takes a lot of organization and to really get the content and then get it out there and someone's got to watch it. But some of the examples she gave, that they do currently right now is that they have Motivational Monday. They have poster with a quote. They highlight public service projects by students. They do a Friday feature of a staff member. They also have Throwback Thursdays, which was, I thought was interesting. It's a way to connect to alumni because they'll show a picture from the past and they'll show a picture of the, you know, what it's like now of the same space. So it's another way to get attention and connect with your community. I also went to Tools and Strategies for Effective Evaluation in Science, STEM. They, I learned there that, this is what, I think what they're saying is that grades four to six is where kids make their decision about how they feel, if they are a science person or a math person or a STEM person. They say by that time, they've figured out what they're, whether they're correct or not, but that's when they've decided what, who they are. I also learned about STEAM versus STEM. STEAM's got the A in because they combine art as part of that creative design process. The, another session was Implementing the Business of Education. And that's about rebranding public education to make it a product of choice. You have to start talking about it in terms of business terms, where you get into ROI questions and benefits versus cost. This presenter is actually this retired superintendent from the Hamilton School District. And I think there, I didn't really quite get what their, you know, what the end game was. But apparently, it's a, it is a project that they're taking to the superintendent organization and the business. They're trying to cross these organizations and kind of rebrand how we talk about public education. Their point was it's about the kids, but that's not enough. It has to be about all the kids. And keeping in mind that eight out of 10 individuals do not have kids in the classroom, so you have to expand that conversation. And also the impact of poverty. Forty-one percent of Wisconsin kids are in poverty. That was really a compelling statistic. The last one I went to was Makerspace, Fab Labs Innovation, what we just saw today. And there were a number of resources that I think I'll just pass along to Nick. Some of the coding software that's out there that's free. You can make music, you can make apps. MIT has free software to do that. And then, of course, you can't go to a convention without wandering through the vendor hall. And they, now they're giving away technology. It's so inexpensive now, they actually give the real product to you. So Jen and I took up on this. This is actually a whiteboard for $169, so pass it along over there.
It really works.
Also, I brought this for Tim. This is a group that is trying to promote financial literacy, so I'm going to give that to Tim. And then also, we ran into a guy that's promoting ACT Success Online Test Prep. And his, again, it's so inexpensive to do it online. His price point was, I don't know, like, it's by a site license, so you can really, you can offer like $50 a kid. It's just amazing. Wasn't it?
It was $15 per student.
Oh, even that low. See, it's very, very low price point.
But I saw today, our high school was offering free.
Oh, it's free?
Per student, our math teachers.
Yeah, facilitated by our teachers, yeah.
Right, but this guy was, he was a good salesman. But this was for every student in the high school, every year, $15 per student. And he had all, he had all these strategies to use.
It's test-taking, it's how you can take a pre-test so you know what to focus on.
It was quite interesting, but we were just trying to enjoy the social time.
There's a lot of these guys out there and you have to remember they're out there for a reason.
We feel like our universal instruction's pretty good test prep for our kids, so.
Okay. And that's all I have.
My report is written, but I was just there for one day, so I'm just going to touch on a couple of things. Linda and I both went to, you know, every year you go to these and it seems they touch on a basic concept. And I found mental health was in a couple areas this year. So the first one we did go to was mental health and Linda touched on it, but the, the mental health first aid she was talking about, it's a class for 48 hours and they say you can send a psychologist there as an example, and that they, they can bring it back and then be certified so that they can teach your other staff then. And what they say was, between the ages of 10 and 24, suicide is the third leading cause of death, yet teachers most often only receive training in your schools and discipline instead of mental health training. So they're just saying that perhaps this might be something else you want to add to your, to your district. And this was by the Port Washington Superintendent. He was pushing this kind of training. And then another area I went to was tackling the top three healthcare cost drivers. And again, one of the issues is mental health in that area. And they were also saying diabetes is another one and other areas that affect health related to diabetes and other conditions. And then they said, well, your wellness training for your staff also. And what they were trying to say was that you should put, you should have programs that are all technology nowadays from millennials and technology-related, and that will save you money for your district. So there are programs for diabetes, there are wellness programs that are all online and that. And then there are also, you know, like Judy, you mentioned to us that you have the virtual doctor. So they should really not just explain to your employees that you have it, but you should constantly be pushing it and keeping it up to save your district money. And then I went to Financial Roles and Responsibilities for School Board Members, just like an update on that for myself, which for the school board members, I do have the link in there if you want to just look at all. It was for policies and things like that, too. But another area that we find interesting at conventions is when you go to the student, student fair exhibit halls. And because you get to talk to the kids and I really hope that we can have our school district at this convention sometime to show them off because I think we have a lot of good programs here. But we did see the Chilton Public School District there, Dr. Patson. They were talking about the musical theater that they have. And they have 1,100 students in their district and they had all these costumes that they make all year long there. And they raise all their fundraising through selling tickets to go to their shows and they're really elaborate costumes that they had on display. It was really interesting. And every student in the district does something for their performances, whether it's, you know, the costumes or the performances or stage or whatever. And it was just really nice to see that. And then also, we saw Kenosha School District. They have their STEM program all the way from kindergarten all the way up through high school, but they have the younger kids there and they were just really excited to be there. And I participated in one of their little games. Well, I'm going to call it a game, but it was, I'll pass it down. One each way. It's these two cards where you had a first look at, it's called the Stroop Effect on neuroscience. Where you look at, you look at colors one way where you look at the words of colors that they are the actual color and then they timed me and then I had to look at the colors when you look at the word red, but it's gray. And then I had to read them off and your time doubles and, but the little kids had fun doing that and it just shows how your mind plays games on you. But it's just nice to see the kids there. And then the speaker that I saw that Linda mentioned, talking about trust. He mentioned the eight pillars of trust, which are clarity, compassion, character, competence, commitment, connection, contribution, and consistency. And when he mentioned clarity, he said, one of the questions you should always ask regarding trust is, how am I going to get, how am I going to get there? And you should ask it again, how am I going to get there and how am I going to get there? And you should always ask that about everything you're doing when you're working on a project. And I think it's a good question to keep asking, but my day was good, except for the vendors. Yeah.
I do have one other thing I got at the vendors, which is, this is the coolest thing. Does anyone know what this is? If I can get it open. I can't get it open.
That's not helpful, Linda. Oh, boy.
But it's a ruler, a scale ruler?
For architects.
For architects, yes. Why don't you pass it to the tech ed people? I thought it was kind of unusual they would give that out.
Okay. Item ninety is the Superintendent's Report, referendum update.
Yeah, I think we'll, from now on, we'll, we'll call this the construction update as we move forward, but we had another meeting, we're meeting every other week with the architects. We had another meeting yesterday with our, we've got a pretty large team in there, and basically, basically what we're doing right now is we're reallocating spaces. For example, yesterday, we changed where the locker rooms were, we changed where the band of music is going to be, we opened up some hallways and changed some rooms, and so it's really just taking a look at having a lot of heads in the room to be able to say, where's the best place for certain things to be in terms of flow, in terms of the curricular areas, so the kids are, are able to get through there, taking a look at just natural things that would be good and bad. So, that's why we, for example, we moved the band and music people over to a different part of the, at least the initial conceptual design. So, we're taking a look at doing a lot of those kinds of things in the future, and I don't think it'll be, correct me if I'm wrong, as far as the virtual tour, do we say a little over a month or so?
A little over a month.
A little over a month. We will have for you the opportunity, they're even going to have, I think you said, one set of goggles, glasses, whatever it might be, where somebody can go through the tour of the building, and we'll even have, you know, to some degree, the color schemes and so on and so forth, but so, so that'll be coming. Once they get, we could have, and the reason we don't put a lot of these things out there is because they change so much. If we were to take a look at the meeting before this one to this one, it's dramatic changes. And what's nice about this group is they'll bring ideas, they'll listen to us, and they change and adapt, and we're very appreciative of that, and I think it's really helped us to get a good design for the building. So, when we take a look at what the building will look like, we're not even there yet, and part of that has to be, how far are we going to, how close will we be to Forest Hill? How far from the wetland do we need to be? So, you know, and we have a big building, so it's going to have to go in certain directions and certain spaces. You know, we're always talking about parking and those kinds of things, what will the lots look like? We're adding another grade, so when we have an event, right now, when we have an event, it's chaos out here, because there's cars parked everywhere, and we got to bring those onto the site, and so we think we're going to be able to do that, so taking a look at bus flow and those kinds of things. So, there's a lot going on. The design phase, I think, is going well. I mean, you guys can jump in and react to it. The biggest thing is, we're able to sit back, and we're always talking about, where do we want to be with this building in five years or ten years if we add this program, or if we're, if we're going to do this or those kinds of things? How will the community use this building? How will they access it? You know, where's the safety concerns and some, some of those things? So, as we report out, and we get more information, we'll bring that to you, but I think the architects need some time to be able to take what we tell them, that they'll go back now and redesign some, several things, actually, and probably come back and say, well, we really can't do that, because a mechanical room might have to be there, or whatever it might be, so now we got to change our thinking a little bit. So, it's give and take, just like it was in a high school project, but I think much cleaner, because now we don't have to work around existing areas and things that we can't move or would be too costly to move. So, it's going well, and, you know, eventually, we'll get to a point, maybe in another month or so, where we can sit down and, and plan a formal groundbreaking ceremony, and then kick that off appropriately, and involve a lot of kids and so on, and so that's where we're at right now.
So, talking about events, when this does start getting built, I mean, I know we have the summer and everything, but perhaps you'll have to move events to other schools or something like?
I think so, Janet. I think whenever we can, to avoid any conflict with any construction, but for the most part, a lot of the things that will take place will really start when school's out, at the end of this year, where they'll have a lot of equipment out there, so we shouldn't have anything going on during the summer, and hopefully, we can get a lot of things tied up, so that if we have events over there, smaller events, we'll be able to do them. But for the most part, we're going to be moving as much as we can to other venues to stay out of the way for a while, so, yeah, good question.
Hi, thank you. All right. Nine E, the Trues Report is available in the Board Docs library. Item ten, the Board Meeting Debriefing. Any comments? Late presentation? Thank you, Nick. Future agenda items. The Business Services Report, Audit Report, February eighth. People's Services Report, School Council's Report, February eighth. The Instructional Services Report, Annual Assessment Report, February twenty-second. Anything else by board members?
Do we have a date when the audit report is going to be available?
That'll be out this week.
All right, then we're looking for a motion to adjourn. So moved. Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion ca, the motion carries. We are adjourned at six fifty-four.